Good afternoon. Welcome to the Monday, March 27th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting. Call it ordered. Sorry, I had my microphone off. We'll excuse Commissioner McClure from the meeting here shortly, or you want to do it now, Debbie?
Whenever you want to do it, sir.
Okay. Commissioner McClure couldn't be here this afternoon, so do I have a motion to excuse?
Motion to.
Second. Motion and second, all in favor. Any opposed? We'll take care of that. Okay, recognitions.
That's it.
Okay. I'm sorry. Commissioner Shores, invocation, pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Will you please join me in a prayer? Most heavenly gracious God, Lord, we come to you and we thank you, Father, for this day. Lord, we just ask that as we go into the business of this county, that you would just watch over us, give us discernment, and, Lord, allow us to make the decisions that would be in the best interest of this county. Father, we ask that you would go with our citizens. Lord, we ask that you would go with any that may be sick or in distress that can hear the sound of my voice. I call upon you to go with them and guide them, being everything they say and do. Father, just continue to go with the people of Nashville, Tennessee, as the tragic shooting today. We ask that you would be with each and every one of those. And, Father, we ask now that you would just go with us and guide us, being everything we say and do. Lead, guide, and direct, and take the overcharge of our lives. These things we ask in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. If you'll stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. We're going to face the flags back here, and if you guys will face the flags up here, we can all face each other.
(laughing). A pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice pro.
Andrew Wade here, Chamber of Commerce. Andrew, glad to have you here tonight. Thank you. Mr. Shores, would you do recognition of veterans, please?
Absolutely, Mr. Vice Chairman. We have started a tradition here of honoring our veterans. Do we have any veterans in the audience tonight? If we do, would you please stand so that you can be recognized? Thank you.[798.42][798.42](applause). Also, before you guys get completely sit down, we have a button for you. If you would come up here, I would be honored to present you with a veterans button from the county.
Fair free, come on up.[813.62][813.62](laughing).
Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you, 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 sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
You're welcome. All right, moving on. Would anybody like to sign up for public address here? The notebook's on the table. If you would, work your way to the front while we take care of some other business, and then we'll be back to the public address. Adoption of the agenda? Is there any changes to the agenda? Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Motion to accept, Mr. Vice Chairman.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? On your clicker. Everybody, please vote.
I'll vote in. And that motion carries by a vote of six zero.
Six zero, awesome. Okay, we've got to length the public address here. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Alice Gray. I live at 119 Delta Street, Lexington. I am here to voice my opposition to the proposal by the commissioners to take control of the Davidson County Board of Health. I was employed by the Davidson County Health Department from 1977 to 1983 as a sanitarium, now called environmental health specialist. I left employment because I moved, but in 1989, I moved back and have lived here ever since. In 2007, I was approved and appointed by the Board of Commissioners for the active citizen position on the Davidson County Board of Health. I served on the board for nine years, 2007, 2016. Many people may not know that the composition of the Board of Health is required by law to include the following licensed physicians: a physician, dentist, optometrist, veterinarian, pharmacist. Also includes a registered nurse, professor, professional engineer, county commissioner, representatives of the public. Knowing the composition of the Board of Health, I was shocked when I read the dispatch article that the commissioners proposed to take over the Board of Health. The article stated you want direct control. A commissioner was quoted as saying, "At the end of the day, I think the Board of Commissioners and the county manager and his staff should have a final say." So my question is, what exactly do you want to take control of and have a final say of? I have a list of health department services. Is it you want control of inspections of restaurants, daycares, septic tank permits, child nutrition, the clinics? You want direct control of the family planning, direct control of immunizations, the school health program, vital records? We don't know what your intentions are. As a former employee of the health department, and as a former member of the Board of Health, and as a citizen, I am opposed to your proposal to take over the Davidson County Board of Health. At the end of the day, I do not want our commissioners, the county manager, and his staff to have a final say and direct control of healthcare and public health decisions that will ultimately affect me. The Board of Health has served the citizens of Davidson County extremely well, and I haven't heard any valid reason that that should change. Instead, at the end of the day, I want our Board of Health, our health department employees who have experience, the expertise in healthcare and public health, to make the decisions in those areas that will personally affect me and my loved ones. And yes, I'm nervous up here because this is very disturbing to me, and I'm getting choked up about it. I was appalled when I read that article, simply appalled. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Diane Kraus. Good afternoon, Ms. Kraus.
Hey. Commissioners, county manager, county attorney, I do appreciate you listening to us, and you may not know me, I'm a has been. I've been around, but I have been around, and I am a resident of Davidson County. My name is Diane Kraus. And I am speaking on behalf of Dr. Dermot Lor. A lot of you do not remember him. He's been gone for several years, but he did hire me as a public health nurse. And then Mr. Richard Baxley was health director ahead of me, and I am sure he would be here tonight if he was able. He's physically not able to be here and speak on the importance of the Board of Health. At your last meeting, you did approve a resolution to look into, I won't say dissolving the Board of Health, but setting it up as an advisory. And I know you have the authority to do this. It's been done across the state many years ago. Some counties tried to do it, but I'm not sure how many are doing it right now, and I don't think that many were the size of Davidson County. And I guess we are still the 10th largest county in the state of North Carolina. I know our population hasn't dropped. I know that we have new businesses coming into the area, so I feel like our population is going to be going up. The Board of Health is appointed by the commissioners, so you do have input into who is selected for the Board of Health. Now granted, under general statutes, they are health professionals. They're doctors. Well, Alice mentioned all of them, so I'm not going to go through those right now, but they are there based on your appointment to the Board of Health. And in my experience as a health director, I can remember the day of walking into the office, everything cool and calm, no problems, and then all of a sudden, I'd get that first call from a doctor's office. Or it might be an emergency room nurse. Or it could just be somebody calling to say, "Hey, we know this person's sick with this. Do y'all know it?" And we would start following up. I'd have the staff start calling the families, touching base, and going through the old public health guidelines of interviewing, investigating, isolating to check out. And a lot of people were not happy with our decisions at that time. I remember one situation, we had hepatitis in a school setting.
Three minutes, Ms. Kraus.
Has it? Well, let me just say, I am not in support of doing away with the authority of the health department. It does still need to stay with the Board of Health. I don't think y'all have time to do it, but it's good to have professionals on there that we can touch base with as the health director.
Thank you, Ms. Kraus. Thank you. Kim Frank.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. I am Kim Frank. I reside in the Ives Creek community in the northeastern part of the county. I also want to speak in opposition to your resolution of the Board of Commissioners taking over the Board of Health. The first Board of Health was mandated by a general statute over 100 years ago, and the Davidson County Health Department was established in 1916, and I'm sure has operated with a Board of Health ever since then. So to my knowledge, and I too am a former employee of the Health Department, so have a little history with the Health Department, and to my knowledge, there's never been an issue that questioned the operation of the Board of Health. So why now? That's the question that I think has not been answered. Also, in the general statute, it's mandated that a county commissioner be a member of the Board of Health. Apparently, our legislators knew that it was important for there to be communication between a Board of Commissioners and a Board of Health, and that was set up that way to be the line of communication. So what is the value of dismissing a board where you have a member on who can bring information back to you, and you send information back to the Board of Health? One of you was quoted in the dispatch that the Board of Commissioners wanted control of the Board of Health. That gives me pause. What does that mean that you want control? I mean, that has some strong meaning there. The fact that that word was used, that you want control, and the fact that my understanding is, is a fact, that the resolution and any reason for coming up with this resolution was never discussed beforehand with the health director or the Board of Health. So again, that gives me pause of, is there a possible hidden agenda here in wanting to take over the Board of Health? You know, we all want transparency in our government. I mean, we hear that all the time. Some of you, one of you, may have used that in your campaign speech, that you would be transparent, and the county should be transparent. The process of this resolution is not an example of transparency. I do urge you to vote against this resolution when it comes up for further review. I suggest, urge you to do some research on how will your responsibilities change when you take on the responsibilities of the Board of Health. I think the Board of Health throughout history here in Davidson County has always been about the well-being of the citizens and not about politics. Thank you for listening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Frank. Rebecca, I can't, yeah, I can't read the last name, sorry. You might want to pronounce it there in the microphone mic.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Greening. I live on Ford Street in Lexington. I'm a retired public health nurse. I was a nurse here for 25 years at the Health Department. I'm very much opposed to the status of the Board of Health being changed to advisory. Any issue that concerns the health of the citizens, which includes myself and much of my family, needs to be based solely on science and facts and no influence of opinions and politics. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, ma'am. Barbara Jones.
I'm here from the, I'm from the Ledford community, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the Board of Health being taken over by the Board of Commissioners also. As the current governing board for public health services in Davidson County, the Board of Health is currently insulated from making decisions that are politically based and motivated. The 12-member board is made up of representatives, as you've already heard, from different professions in the community, and they've had various experience, vast majority of experience in the community, so they know the community and the needs of the community. And as you already stated, this is dictated by the North Carolina general statutes, and is tasked with solely making decisions that protect the health and well-being of the community based on current laws and regulations and currently understood best medical practice. That changes with time, but that's what is currently best known. The decisions of this type should not become political footballs. To place a non-political Board of Health under the control of a political entity, which is the Board of Commissioners, sets up the groundwork for decisions to be made based on political will and whim, and that does not serve our community well. There's a children's book that I like to read to my children, grandchildren, and it's titled Alexander and the Terrible, Horrible, No Good, Very Bad Day. And I think that applies to other things as well. I use it lots of times. But I think this is a terrible, horrible, no good, very bad idea, and I hope that you consider what is best for the community and not accept this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Calvin Odom.
Thank you for listening to me for just a moment. Anybody that knows me knows that's just not my thing, so I'm going to shamelessly read from my notes here. First of all, thank you, guys, all of you, for the things that you've done for the citizens of Davidson County, for the county, for the economic welfare of our citizens in the county. You're doing an amazing job, and I think that we all appreciate that. First, I don't know, I've lived in Davidson County since birth, and currently on Millstream Lane in Hedrick Grove area. And if you look at my hair, that's been quite a while in Davidson County. So in all of these years, it's the first time that I felt necessary to come and speak to you. I value and I do respect the processes that we have in place right now with the Board of Health. My question to you is, we don't really understand what your motives are. My question is, if you want to turn them strictly into an advisory council, why do you need to do that if you're going to follow their recommendations? Why do you need to change your control over the Board of Health? If you don't, if you're not going to listen to their recommendations as just an advisory council, and you have a reason that you think that you need to vote against something that they recommend, why? These guys are professionals in their fields, they're the experts, they know what they're doing, they took oaths to protect the public, to protect their patients. I just can't understand it. You wouldn't ask these guys basically to say, "I need y'all to set the tax rate for the county's citizens and for the businesses in the county." You wouldn't do that. It's your job. You guys do an excellent job with that. You wouldn't ask them to work out some sort of a new incentive to get more business to the county for us. That's your job. You guys are doing a great job of it. You guys are doing a great job of it. So why? Why do you want to take over what they do? They're not going to ask you to make decisions regarding the health. Why? Because they're the experts in the field. It needs to remain separate. I value and respect those processes that are in place. I trust the professionals that have been appointed to do their jobs in the Board of Health, and I oppose the resolution concerning the takeover. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. This next one, I'm sorry, I can't read, so I'm going to have to pass it over to Ms. Watford to see if she can read it. Mail?
I think maybe Mark at Waterford Point Road.
What is it? I'm sorry, what is it? My handwriting's about like yours, so I can't say anything.
I did it with my left hand, I'm sorry. I'm here tonight, Neil Connor. I'm here, I live in Southmont Community, of course, lived in Davidson County since 1958.
Or state your, I'm sorry, state your name again.
Neil Connor. N-E-A-L.
Neil.
Oh, Neil Connor, okay.
Okay. I've, I've lived in this area since 1958, and, you know, as far as the Health Department's done, you know, it's never been an issue.
Sorry.
My time up?
No.
No.
I don't know what that was.
We're all as confused as you are.
Anyway, I was, I was shocked. I saw that in the paper, and I was shocked. I said, "Why was this entered at the last minute? Why didn't they have a formal public hearing?" And if you want to dissolve something, why don't you put it to a vote to the people, you know, in an election, and see what they want to do? But my question is, it's sort of like mission control. Would you do away with mission control and just have a certain amount of people say, "Hey, we're going to launch," without having support? So my question here is, what makes y'all better than this nonpartisan group that's on the Health Board to make decisions for us? I don't think any of y'all are, y'all have any background in health sciences? Do any of y'all? That's my question. And if you do, yeah, yeah, go for it. But if you don't, leave it to the professionals. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Glennis Fulton?
You did very well with my name.
Yep.
I'm Glennis Fulton, and I live in the Tyro area at 300 Royal Ashdown Lane. I can't really add much to what has already been said, because I'm part of the retired system. But, so therefore, I'm just going to say that I'm here in support for our Board of Health, which is in fact a nonpartisan, as Neil had mentioned, governing body, and it protects us, the citizens of Davidson County, again, based on their expertise with their professions. And I think we need to continue to have this knowledgeable group of individuals who advise and work directly with the Health Department and are available at minutes' notice, just as Diane had mentioned. Whereas if we have to go to you all, it may be more difficult, and then you need to research, if you don't know the public health laws and the statutes, they are there, and they have to be followed. An advisory board or a group of any other individuals cannot take control and do their own ruling, make up their own laws. So regardless of how this falls, it's going to be a big responsibility on that particular group of individuals. And if we keep those individuals who have medical backgrounds, environmental backgrounds, then I think we will continue to plow down a road that we've been in the past 100 years with public health, and we'll find ourselves on top at the end of each incident that we have to investigate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fulton.
And I would like to say, I believe I read this morning, that next week is Public Health Week, and so I just want to shout out to all the public health workers that they do a fabulous job, and I am impressed with how they have handled things the past few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Jacobs?
My name's Glenn Jacobs. I live at 200 South Mohawk Drive. Been a resident of Davidson County for 50 years or so. Wouldn't want to live anywhere else. Davidson County is one of the best counties in North Carolina, and it's been well-run. And I'm also a Vietnam veteran.
Amen.
But I wanted to speak on behalf of the Board of Health. I just feel like that they should remain the governing body in public health. It is made up of medical professionals who best understand public health needs, and would ask you to please consider keeping it as it is. My motto's always been, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." So, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. And the last one, Rick Lanier. How you doing, Mr. Lanier?
I'm doing great. I'll try to be short and sweet, I'll say it where you say it.
There you go.
And I know what the importance that is. Didn't know that this was coming up about the Board of Health, but I'm here on behalf of Morrison Grove, but I would like to make a comment concerning that. I served as Commissioner appointee to the Board of Health when I was on the board, and one of the greatest things that I remember was Ms. Kraus was there over the Board of Health at the time, and we had to deal with the situation with prenatal care, undocumented citizens eating up all of our funds within the first three months of a budget. And even had the guy down from the state and said, "If y'all don't comply, you're gonna, you're gonna, you won't get our funding." I said, "I'm only one vote out of seven, but you can keep your money. We'll fight you." There's a lot of money wasted in the Board of Health. That's all I can say. All right? My name is Rick Lanier, Honorable Commissioners. My name is Rick Lanier. I reside at 10461 Lindwood Southmont Road, Lexington, North Carolina, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Morrison Grove. Since Scott and Everin opened, I have used this venue on two occasions just since the open in October. The first time, I was actually the first, first customer that they had. The first time was on my 70th birthday, and the second time was for a fundraiser. I also attended a third event with several elected officials, Commissioners, legislators, and state senators attended to watch the election and vote results as they came in. Many of those in attendance that night complimented the quality of the venue, and rightly so, because there's nothing comparable to it in Davidson County. This venue provides a needed service for the citizens of Davidson County. It would be very unfortunate if they were unable to prepare and/or cater to their guests on this site. I am sure that I'm not the only one that feels this way. Scott and Everin are good businessmen and have a giving sense of community spirit and are always generous in their mode of operation. I'm sure that they're willing to comply with whatever requirements the planning and zoning recommends, as well as the Commissioners deem necessary. I trust you will accept the recommendation of our very capable planning department and zoning, and it appears to me that some neighbors merely got used to the venue being closed or limited activity when Larry Morrison became ill and passed away, and I miss Brother Larry. Scott and Everin have made a substantial investment in this facility.
Three minutes, Ms. Lanier.
I'm sorry?
Three minutes is up, Rick. Thank you.
They only want the same access Larry Morrison had and are willing to accept and comply with whatever rules. Please consider approving their request.
Thank you, Rick. And if you want to stick around till we hear that public hearing on the, on that zoning request, you're welcome to do so at that time, you know.
Did you miss my name on the list for speaking? Susan Odom.
I'm sorry, maybe I did. Sorry about that.
I'll be really, really brief. First of all, I want to thank all of you guys for all the work that you do for the folks in Davidson County. I live out in the central Davidson community, and I'm a lifelong resident of Davidson County. Another board that I value and respect is our Davidson County Board of Health. I'm here tonight to ask you to vote no for that resolution to take over that board. I feel like they always have the, each individual person's best interest whenever they're trying to protect our health and welfare, and they've done a lot of very hard work over the years, things that I think sometimes the public does not know because they're, they're kind of behind the scenes working, but they have the best interests and health and welfare of each individual person in this, in this county. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Odom. And I apologize that I overlooked you. I was trying to mark them off one at a time. Okay, so we're going into public hearing for the Established Fire Service District for Davidson County Executive Airport. So we'll move into business. Anybody wanting to escape before the business starts, now's the time to do so. Ma'am, have a great afternoon, okay?
Yeah, thanks.
You.
Got the fire marshal counting heads.
Okay, Mr. Fire Marshal.
Danny Ward, Fire Marshal for the county. Chairman, fellow Commissioners, this public hearing is a part of the process in establishing a county service district that will provide for the financing, provision, and maintenance of services necessary to provide fire protection to the Davidson County Airport and its associated properties. A report required by the North Carolina General Statute was submitted for review prior to this meeting. That report outlines the details of the proposed fire service district and includes a map of the affected area. And following this public hearing, the Fire Marshal's office is requesting the Board of Commissioners to approve this proposed fire service district, which will be titled the Davidson County Airport Fire Service District.
Okay. Anybody wanting to speak in favor or in opposition? I will open the public hearing. Nobody to speak in favor or opposition? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions from the board? No? Okay, do I have a motion in a second?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the establishment of the Fire Service District for Davidson County Executive Airport.
Do we have a second? Cast your vote, please.
All of the votes are in, and that motion carries by a vote of 6-0.
Awesome. Thank you, Danny. Appreciate it. Going to look at agenda item, um...
7B.
7B. Rezoning request by Buell Barker Jr., Lexington Township containing 44.45 acres from HI to RM1.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. That, that item, we received an official withdrawal form from Mr. Barker's attorney, Bitt Holton, today, so we can take that off the agenda, and we do not have to hear that tonight.
Okay.
It has been officially withdrawn.
Good deal, then. Okay, we'll move on to 7C, requests, rezoning request by Morrison Grove, Scott Rhodes, and Lexington Township containing 3.2 plus-minus acres from RA2 to CZ8C. Ms. Crook?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, Madam and fellow Commissioners. We have a request tonight by Morrison Grove, Mr. Scott Rhodes, to rezone property in Silverhill Township, Tax Map 9, Lot 26, containing 3.2 acres more or less. Said property is located on the west side of Hedrick Mill Road, approximately 740 feet south of the Beck's Nursery Road intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RA2 Rural Agricultural District to that of CZ8C Conditional Zoning Highway Commercial District. Many of you are familiar with the Morrison's Grove facility. If you divert your attention to the overhead, it's the property outlined in yellow here. This is Hedrick's Mill Road, and this is Beck's Nursery Road. Mr. Larry Morrison used to reside here at Lot 25, and he built his Morrison's Grove Event Center on Lot 26. This was done as a special use permit, and the special use permit had a long list of conditions to help mitigate potential impacts of a facility like this. One of the impact, or one of the conditions was a residency requirement, and this facility operated, it was initially done in 2003 by the Davidson County Zoning Board of Adjustment, which was a Class B special use permit, and then it was expanded and modified in 2006 and 2007. So it's been in front of that board and vetted at three, three separate times as appropriate for this location. When the property, when Mr. Morrison passed, the prop, the two properties involved were sold separately, which put the property in a violation condition with the special use permit requirements. We reached out to Mr. Rhodes and contacted him, sent notice of violation letter, where he promptly responded to us within, inside of a week, and after some consultation and interpretation of the rules, it was decided to try this venue or this avenue to rezone to a conditional zoning highway commercial district. Basically, what Mr. Rhodes has done is he has taken verbatim all of the conditions that were in the special use permit and placed them as a proposal under tonight's conditional zoning permit, with the exception of the residency requirement. They have substituted for the residency requirement a, a statement that they will be, he or his, he or his partner will be present at every single event that takes place so that they can monitor and make sure that they are trying to be good neighbors and keep the sound down and do everything within their power to, to respect where they're at and the folks around them. So that's my brief introduction to this. Unless the board has any questions, I know Mr. Rhodes is in the audience and would probably like to further elaborate on his application.
Okay. I'm going to declare the public hearing open, and Mr. Rhodes, if you'll come forward and explain your request.
My name is Scott Rhodes. I reside at 2231 City Lake Road. Ms. Crook pretty much covered what, how things transpired, how they got in touch with me, and the issues that needed to be addressed. We addressed those issues at planning and zoning meeting, and we moved forward as far as that goes. As for me, I'm a lifelong resident, born and raised in Lexington. I went to North Davidson, graduated from Western Carolina, went to work for Lexington Barbecue in 1976. I've remained in the food service and hospitality industry for 45 years. Some of you, if not all of you, know of Larry Morrison, some have worked with him. He was a very kind and generous man. He was involved with Davidson County and his community, his church. He created this venue to celebrate with family and friends, church, community, a place to meet new friends, create lasting memories. We would simply like to continue this legacy with his venue in name and in spirit. I'm a Christian man. I pray that I might be, as Larry Morrison was, a humble servant, a gracious host, a good man, and a good neighbor. As Rhodes Events Services and Nardali Group, as you see, we, we want to operate as Morrison Grove in, in a way that would provide a needed facility for weddings, civic, religious, social, community events, in a clean and safe environment that's affordable for all the people in the As Mr. Crook said, we are going to supervise each and every event and propose to provide services in the way of catering, prepared food, DJ services, dance floor, audio, visual services, kitchen facilities, banquet facilities, table chairs, lanterns, et cetera, from approximately 150, 200 guests per event. The rest I had here was, he addressed, they contacted us... The rest I had here was, he addressed, uh, they contacted us, and we thought that we could operate under the special use. It wasn't addressed at our closing. Uh, he contacted us, uh, I contacted them back. We followed their recommendations as far as moving forward with this type of zoning and structuring things that we would be on supervising each event. And we will ensure the general welfare and safety of our guests, along with helping to direct traffic in and out, controlling noise levels. We will always be improving our appearance and maintaining our landscaping, and will provide humble service to our guests. Instead of addressing all the conditions, uh, Mister Crook pretty much put it, we're basically conveying the conditions from the special use permit onto the conditional zoning highway commercial application. And these conditions were approved by our Planning and Zoning Board. The use of this facility will promote the public health, safety, general welfare, and operation accordance with the zoning plan specified. The character of the existing neighborhood will not be harmed in any way whatsoever as a role of, a result of this requested conditional zoning highway commercial. At this time, other than questions, questions from you ladies and gentlemen, which I thank you so much for hearing me and for your service, uh, I would like to, uh, submit substantial evidence in this hearing, uh, that the development of this property under the CZHC will at minimum maintain or enhance the value of contiguous properties. Do you have any other questions for me, gentlemen?
Was that a professional, um, statement there about the, uh, value, or has he, has he got a professional?
It, it's an opinion, but since this is a legislative action...
Oh, I know, but I'm just, I'm asking that question.
I think he has a, Mister Timothy Reagan is willing to present that documentation.
Any questions, uh, for Mister Rhodes? I just have one, Mister Vice Chair. Mister Rhodes, what is the, uh, the max occupancy of that, of your building?
Uh, it is capable of more than two hundred, but we're looking at a hundred and fifty to two hundred per event.
Okay.
We're working with the Davidson County Health Department right now with environmental, with, uh, Mister Cecil. He has a permit on his table now to expand our septic and all to take care of a greater number and, uh, to get our kitchen, uh, facility permitted so that we can have food on site. So, that is on the table, just waiting for him to sign off on.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mister Rhodes? If you want to, take a front row seat there, and we'll see if anybody else is in opposition or opposed. Case any more questions?
Morning, or morning, good evening, Board of Commissioners. I'm Tim Reagan. I've, uh, I'm Reagan Real Estate Owner and been a licensed broker for thirty-eight years and, and a North Carolina Certified Appraiser for thirty-two years. Thank you. All right. So, I just wanted to do what I normally do when I come, present evidence to the board, and that is, prior to this time, I did an impact study of, of what similar venues around Davidson County, uh, how they operate, and then also do a study of property values around, surrounding those venues and whatever results come out or the results that, that I can testify to. And so, so what I've done is, um, if I can bring that...
We may need to...
Bring that up.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. It's okay. That's where I found it when I came in today and didn't even dawn on me to grab it.
Do you have, does the board have a copy of my impact study?
I don't. I think so. Does the board have a copy of Mister Reagan's impact study? I think that was included.
I know it did.
Okay, I thought it was included in the, in the packet. Keep going. There you go, it's right there.
Okay, we'll just begin by this. This is just, if you just pull up, um, event venues on Google Maps, this is what you come up with and pops up. So, first of all, venues like, like the subject property are relatively common around Davidson County. There's a big need for them. There is, the demand is incredible. If you've tried to plan a wedding, you know what I'm talking about. We have, most places that I'm familiar with around the county, they're booked out for a year or so in advance. And, um, I know folks that have to go out of the county to have a wedding or something like that, or it's some type of an event, just because of the, um, to, of the demand for such facilities. So, um, you can see on the, uh, on the map that we're looking at quite a few just in the southern half of Davidson County. And, um, there we go. The subject properties, you can see, where's my light here?
There's a button up there.
I thought I had it. I don't, oh, it's not on, I think that was it.
This right here.
Yep, okay.
There's that one right there.
Gotcha, gotcha. Yeah, it wasn't, wasn't turned on at first. Right here's Morrison Grove. Here is the Reed Farm, which the board has heard, um, on that too in, in the past, because I was testifying. This is Hickory Flat Farm, uh, just northwest of Denton, Board and Batten Events. Wildwood Acres is actually, pops up on Google Maps, but it's not in Davidson County, it's across on the other side of the lake. Everlasting Acres is what used to be, uh, Labree. Doctor Michael Phillips is, uh, the venue on his farm, and then this is Wella Farm up in Tyro. I used to live right across the street from this. This is some of my wife's family that, that run Wella Farm. So, my point is that event venues are commonplace in Davidson County. So, I did some research around and found, and, and just basically looked at, at sales and, and activity, real estate activity around, um, some venues, just to see what the reaction of the market was to those venues being located there. If there were adverse effects from a venue being located in a particular neighborhood, it would come in the form of noise or traffic, and you would see the market react to that if people would not want to be there. They wouldn't want to live necessarily beside or in close proximity to those venues. And you'd see either a lot of properties going on the market and possibly to be sold for below market values as a result. So, that's in it in a nutshell. So, here's what we're going to do, is go through the three, what I thought were the three most similar venues. This is one that's very, very well known. It's, uh, one that Steve Summer developed down in, uh, and down by the lake, and it's , uh, the Board and Batten at nine forty, uh, nine sixty-four Marvin Hedrick Road in Lexington. So, they built that in twenty sixteen. Since that time, there were three sales right across the street from it. One was a lot that sold for twenty-four thousand in twenty eighteen, about the time that the, um, the, the venue had been opened. And then it's, well, before it, before it had opened, I mean, sorry, it was after it was opened, I'm getting backwards here. So, the lot sold for that, but then the house is built and then sold for twenty twenty or two, in twenty twenty for, for four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. You're not going to have a house of that value getting sold right across from the venue if there's a problem with that. The next is, the middle lot there at Marvin Hedrick Road is a, a lot that sold in twenty sixteen, about the time the venue was built, and then resold in twenty twenty for thirty thousand. So, it increased in value by ten thousand dollars. The third was nine sixty-seven Marvin Hedrick Road that sold in twenty twenty. The lot sold for thirty thousand, and then a new home was built there and sold in twenty twenty-two for three hundred and sixty-five thousand. These are pretty high-value homes that you're just not going to have the, uh, that kind of activity if there's problems associated with that venue. Hickory Flat that I showed you on the map earlier is north, just northwest of Denton. It's a, it's a farm that is being used more for during, by the agritourism part of the agricultural zoning that it has. And, uh, there were two sales. The, the venue is, is, I'm sorry, it's, uh, we got backwards again. Okay. The venue is outlined in blue, and there were two sales, one to the north and one to the southwest here of, of this venue. And the sales indicated that one was a seventy-acre tract, sold in two thousand and ten for a hundred and three thousand, sold again in twenty seventeen for two hundred thousand. And there were no noted improvements when I looked into the, to the sale. It's not like somebody came in and built a lot of other buildings and things on the property. It was pretty much exactly the same property, just resold again in twenty seventeen. Eleven fifty-seven Yates Road in Denton, uh, that's an eighteen and a half acre tract. That's the one to the north there, and it sold, um, it has a single-family dwelling on it, built in nineteen seventy, sold in ninety-six for sixty-five thousand, and then again in twenty nineteen for two hundred and twenty-five thousand. The only notable change to that property was they converted a finished carport to a finished garage, otherwise it's the same property. And then finally, the, the third was the one I mentioned earlier, Everlasting Acres, it used to be Labree. This was Doctor Michael Phillips. First of all, I, I appraised both of these properties, the venue itself and, and the houses that, that were associated with that. The venue itself sold in twenty twenty-two for one point two million dollars, which was what the appraised value was. And then Doctor, one of his former, um, medical associates, uh, which was Doctor Philip Marx, on the property, uh, in yellow, right here adjacent to it. And, uh, this sold for more than what I had originally appraised it for, uh, it at one point three million in, in twenty twenty-two also. Again, I just want to repeat that the activity around the venues, uh, some of the other ones like the Reed Farm down on Workman Road, it's an isolated venue, so there's no been the, and plus, the Reed's own most all the properties surrounding that one, so there's not been any sales activity there. And, um, again, I want to reiterate that if there were any adverse effects from, from being associated with these venues, then, um, then that would come in the form of, of reduced property values and, at, as indicated by reduced sale prices and negative values there.
Any questions for Mister Reagan? Okay, Mister Reagan, if you're good. I'm, I'm going to bring anybody in opposition up first. Let's do it that way. Is anybody in here that opposes, uh... If you will state your name and address for the record, please.
Somebody's Richard Nance, in twenty-seven ninety Hedrick Mill Road, adjacent to said property. Before I get into my prepared statement, I wanted to kind of bring up, and I don't know how this thing works, but we'll figure it out, all the venues that were mentioned here were off at a distance with a great amount of acreage around them or on, they're on. You can see this. When you come to... Where is it at? The propos, whoop, I went too many, sorry. When you go to the property that's in question, it is in the middle of residential area. There are homes in close proximity as opposed to, there, as opposed to the other examples that was given.
Now, where do you live out here on this map?
I'm Lot, uh, that's the number twenty-eight.
I got you.
Mm-hmm. Also, some of what, I'd like to just at least make aware that there has been a housing and land increase in value, excuse me, um, from two thousand and nineteen, or two thousand, excuse me, nineteen ninety-six to two thousand and nineteen, has naturally increased in value. So, that's just a statement I wanted to make. As I said before, good evening. My name's Richard Nance, live at Hedrick Mill Road, land adjacent to the proposed request. I'm a liaison for my fellow neighbors that could not be here tonight. I'm one voice, but I speak for many voices. Also speaking for my wife, Amy Beck, and myself. First, I'd like to thank the Davidson County Commissioners for allowing this small rural neighbors and farmers time to voice our opposition to the Morrison Grove Building, proposed planning from rural agricultural district to highway commercial district. We identify as rural residential because of the many fields that are farmed, and our area has multiple families that live nearby, not to mention the multiple wildlife species that are accustomed to a rural peaceful sanctuary that they call home. We are not located on a highway, nor are we located on a major street. There's not a need for such a facility here in the middle of a quiet residential neighborhood. The original permit was special use with conditions that Mister Morrison had to live on the property. He had not used the building in many years for events. When he had, they were mostly unpaid church singings from time to time. It was not a full-time business. Mister Morrison owned Davidson Funeral Homes. This was more of a hobby. Mister Morrison had not used the property for anything but storage over the last several years before his passing. Mister Morrison was a good neighbor, family-oriented, and a great steward of the neighborhood. So, it was never an issue of increased traffic, noise, high-intensity lighting being used, nor the amount of exposure that it brought to our rural neighborhood. Currently, the zoning board already knows, but maybe others here tonight do not. The property being used by the new owners, having events, weddings, and other programs, the exist, excuse me, the existing structure has already had work done to include a patio without securing a permit from Davidson County, has not had any type of health inspection, fire inspection, electrical inspection, septic upgrades, and numerous other items that have not been signed off by Davidson County, all while operating without a permit, proper permitting or zoning, resulting in a court order to not continue by Davidson County Health Department, including serving alcoholic beverages without a license from the Davidson County ABC Board. Our feeling that the owners are not business-minded enough to run it properly. Examples, not researching the zoning requirements for the building before purchasing it, nor after being in the restaurant business for decades, even bothering with food safety, nor securing health department inspection, and without meeting proper requirements for serving food. The only reason to bring up the aforementioned is to establish a pattern of how we, the neighborhood feel the owners will simply not comply with any guidelines, rules, or safety concerns set forth by any of the departments of Davidson County. Presently, the lighting is much brighter than before, not directed downward, shining through the wooded lots into homes. Picture can be provided, and I apologize that I did not get it to the board, but this is out my window at my home. That's the light from Morrison's. We do not feel the increased traffic and awareness to our families would be safe and would cause future crime increases. The requested hours of Sunday through Saturday, eight to midnight, business does not coincide with our quiet rural living and will be unwelcome from the families closest to the Morrison Grove Building. In summary, the proposed use of the facility is not good for our rural tranquility. It could potentially create an unsafe environment for the children in the area or the neighbors, exposing us to too many unknown people, strangers who may have other intentions than attending the, the facility's festivals, events, and other exhibitions. There's no benefit to a small residential community having an event center. We are not looking for commercial growth. There are many other facilities of this nature conveniently located in Davidson County that are already offering these services. If there was ever a need for one, we, the neighbors, would know where we could reach out for one, certainly not in the middle of residential neighborhood. We feel there is truly not a need for another one, most definitely not between families' home, homes, not to mention the possibility of when the business gets sold again, it becoming some other type of commercial business. We simply do not want this happening in our residential family neighborhood. We understand that the rezoning, rezonings are profit centered... We understand that the rezoning, rezonings are profit center for Davison County in the form of tax revenue, and the opposition has an uphill battle from the start, so we respectfully ask that the Davis, that the Davison County Commissioners do not approve the request for the event center. Thank you again to the Davison County Commissioners for your time and consideration in this matter.
Any questions?
I have one.
Okay.
Do you have anything to, to show where, I, I hear you keep repeating, "we, the neighbors." Do you have anything to show where you speak for those neighbors, a legal document that shows that you're authorized to speak for those neighbors?
No, sir, I don't.
Okay. I'm not, I'm saying you don't.
I will, I will make one suggestion, though, is if, as I did with the zoning board, that if there's some advice or help or something that would help the opposition, we're not, we don't go, we don't go to law school, we're not, for the most part, business people.
I'm just talking about what we can consider legally, and that's the reason I was asking you that.
I understand.
Did you have a document that I, because I hadn't seen one, I was looking through here. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for this gentleman? I, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, did you live there when Mr. Morrison ran this facility?
Look, my family, my wife has had that property for over thirty years. It's been family property, even the Morrison residence was family farm property for over a hundred years, so when he ran the, uh, facility, no.
Y'all didn't live there when he ran the facility?
We did not live there, but we have been there and knew Mr. Morrison and knew what he'd been using it for in the past.
Was there a house there already, I guess, the house that y'all live in?
No, no, sir, we built our home.
Y'all build a house?
We did, we did, we built our home.
Okay.
Mr. Vice Chair, I do have a question. Your house, sir, about how far is that away from the?
Approximately from the road, four hundred feet.
Okay, can you show us with the clicker there, is it got, the red dot working on this one?
Right there. Right there is the... Oh, somebody else has got it.
That's the house right there?
That's the house, yes, sir.
And the facility's right there.
I gotta show off my grammar.
I'm telling you what, that's... I, I have a scale here, Mr. Chairman, uh, Vice Chairman. Physically, from the event center to their house, looks like about eight hundred feet.
Eight hundred feet.
Yes, sir.
Because I'm about four fifty off the road, so it's probably four fifty to the...
Okay, any other questions, sir? Thank you, sir, we appreciate it.
We would reserve the right before judgment was passed or after judgment was passed of some conditions. We don't know what we're doing, we really don't. We're, we're, we're all new to this, we're just common people with a common goal is to make sure that we protect ourselves and, as stated, the midnight, even Friday and Saturday, that's in their request, eight to twelve.
And I think there's, there's conditions here, we, we're gonna follow conditions, so we'll, we'll hear those shortly, the conditions after we hear everybody else.
Glad to go through those.
And, and that was another question I do have for you. Uh, back when Mr. Morrison was running this, uh, facility, was there any complaints from the neighbors at that time that you know of?
No, sir.
So if we keep it pretty close to that, we should be good then, correct?
I would imagine so.
Right, okay, we'll, we'll see if we can stay there if it passes, okay? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else in opposition to this rezoning request? Okay, anybody, uh, forward?
Well, since I didn't get finished a while ago, just a few, few things I'm playing.
You guys left?
I, I should've held them till, till they heard. I got here a little late, uh, didn't get a chance to...
I started to tell you and then I was like, no, let him finish and then...
Well, but, but at any rate, uh, uh, it was my understanding before it came tonight, there were only one opposition and he just spoke, and, uh, uh, others, if, if it was important enough, they would have been here. But, uh, I, uh, as I said, I had my seventieth birthday party there, we had gospel singing, and, uh, and I was a little disappointed talking about lighting. I was a little disappointed because it didn't have all the lights that Larry Morrison had that would shine on the stage and, and didn't, I had to rent a stage and, and, uh, he's got the low, uh, volume lighting in there. Some of the, you that have been there, some of you sitting here have been there, and, uh, so it's, 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 it's not, it's not in-your-face type of lighting, and it, these, these folks are very community-oriented, and I won't labor a lot of time on that, but I just want to say, uh, that, uh, the, uh, second event, I went there, they provided the, the event center free of charge, uh, for a fundraiser for a young lady that, that's a friend of ours, that had CRPS. Only two hundred thousand people in the United States have been diagnosed with that. It's, it attacks the nervous system. Uh, she was in a wheelchair and had already affected, one called, also called the burning limb, had affected one of her arms. Uh, they provided that event center, our goal was to raise a hundred thousand dollars. Guess what? We raised a hundred and nine thousand dollars. She just got back two weeks ago from Fayetteville, Arkansas, and is walking and running. Uh, and, uh, uh, the, uh, they not only provided that, Mr. Evren, the other partner, he cooked the, we bought the supplies, he cooked the spaghetti of his, at his restroom, Ashborough, and brought it down there in pans that we reheated in the ovens for the spaghetti dinner, and I'm telling you, I, I don't, I don't know of an event center in this county that I could go to and ask for that kind of, uh, community service and kindness, and, uh, I would be, uh, I would be totally, totally disappointed if they couldn't operate like, uh, Larry did, and, but yet they're willing to go beyond what he did. He had, there was times that they had, uh, health department grading in that facility while, uh, Larry had it. These folks are willing to upgrade the septic tank, willing to, uh, comply with the zoning. It's, to me, I'm not trying to tell you what to do, it's just a no-brainer to me, but, but thank you for your support on it, and I don't want to labor you any longer on it.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier.
I'm totally, hundred percent for it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Rhodes, do you have anything, any additional, uh, information you'd like to,
Well, I, I would, in a sense, like to rebuttal, um, Mr. Nance's statements, because I think most of those accusations were extremely bogus, um...
Which ones is that, I'm sorry?
I would, I'll have to go down the list, as far as him representing the neighborhood, that's hearsay, for my...
We've settled, we've settled that.
As far as my lighting, it's, in the exterior parking lot, it's pointed towards my building. As far as me operating without the substantial permits or everything, everything I've done from the day one was from that special use permit that I thought I did in good faith and I followed to the letter. As far as having alcohol without a permit, we do not sell alcohol on this facility. We allow them to bring it in, give it away. If we need, uh, spec- if we need an ABC license or a, a licensed bartender for an event, we will get one. There was just lots of accusations that was thrown out there from me building to this without what I needed to do. Everything I've done, I checked on and, and, and tried to follow the proper procedure with the planning zoning, with the permits pulled if needed, this kind of thing, that kind of thing.
Was your kitchen in violation of, um, the health department?
Uh, our kitchen, according to, unbeknownst to me, had not been permitted, which, when I walked in the building before I purchased it, there were health grades on the wall. So me being in the restaurant business, assumptions, you know what they'll get you, but I assumed that that kitchen had been permitted. The county, the county said that it had not, my septic system needed to be expanded so that I could permit my kitchen. That's, so I got an engineer, the numbers, the system to be, the upgrades to be put in place so that I can move to get that permitted so that I can serve on-site to meet, uh, the health department's, uh, request. So that's on his desk now, waiting for it to be finalized.
Okay, any questions? Any questions on this side? All right, I'm gonna declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Vice Chairman. Couple points that I would like to clarify, um, I, I applaud Mr. Nance for coming out. If somebody was gonna reopen this next to my house, I would want to make sure what's going on and, and make sure it's not gonna be something wild and crazy, um, because, you know, ninety-nine point nine percent of people in the county, their largest investment is their home. Um, he did, he did bring up something about if it was sold, what could be placed there if approved, these conditions run with the land, they don't run with the owner, whatever's approved, if it's approved tonight, would have to stay with the land. So the next owner, if Mr. Nardali and Mr. Rhodes decide to sell this facility, the same conditions that are here tonight would actually go with the land. Um, we alluded to some conditions, there are fifteen conditions in the application, I've included that in y'all's packet. Um, the, I would like to point out condition number seven, Morrison Grove is owned by and will be operated exclusively by the Applicants' Roads Event Center LLC and Nardali Group LLC. At the planning board, there was a point of clarification with that, that means that they will be at every single event that takes place there, that's the, that's the condition. It was a little bit vague, so we wanted to get a point of clarification there. Um, I can go through these one by one if you want me to, uh, if not, I could, would submit this as end of the record, these fifteen conditions, if approved, would be applicable to the property. I'd leave that to the board's discretion and, um...
Let me ask you this, why come we couldn't have just left this RA two and made one of the conditions that if he sold it, it couldn't be run as this, um, type of establishment?
Well, because under, because the residence was no longer there, they were operating in violation of the special use permit that was allowed in RA two, so they were actually in violation, and this, this procedure was a remedy, a path to, to compliance.
But I'm saying, the only thing that made them out of compliance was that the owner was no longer there, right?
And, and, and that, that act, that's, that's astute observation, that option was looked at, there was some discussion about Mr. Nardali actually permitting a dwelling inside the facility to live on-site, and that could have potentially brought them back into compliance. They did have an issue with the northern setback. It needed to be a hundred foot from the property line, and because it was only forty feet, they would have had to work a deal out with Mr. Stiltner, who now owns lot twenty-five. So they couldn't technically meet all of the conditions that were in the, uh, special use permit, mainly the one, that forty-foot setback from a hundred. Now, the forty-foot setback does comply with the setbacks in highway commercial.
Because the only issue I see with this is, like I said, if this gentleman here ever sells it, who knows what's gonna happen next time?
Well, it would have to be this.
Right.
Yeah, it'd have to be exactly what's been agreed to, event center with all fifteen conditions, hours of operation, lighting standards, everything, the, the, the new owner would have to be present at every event.
If he wanted a change, he'd come by, he'd have to come before y'all.
That is correct, yes, yes, sir.
Okay, does the, uh, neighbors here have a copy of these conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
At the planning board, I let them know that they could come look at the application anytime they needed to, we were more than willing to share any information with them. Um, the hours Mr. Nance alluded to, they are a little bit complicated, Sunday through Thursday, it's eight, eight AM to ten PM, and then Friday and Saturday night, eight to midnight. Um, that's something that, that I didn't know if the board wanted to discuss that any, I think Mr. Rhodes did allude to the fact that they would probably be done by eleven, but wanted to go to twelve midnight just to give people time to clear out and, and get the equipment and, uh, everything shut down. So I did want to point that out, but, um, if, if the board has no questions about the conditions, I'll read staff recommendation.
Do I have any questions about the conditions? Anything to do with the time? Y'all good with the time, neighbors?
No, we'd like to see, if, if it doesn't do, we'd like to see not a full-blown eight AM to ten PM or...
I'm the closest neighbor, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. Repeat that, sir? He's the closest neighbor. Thank you, sir.
Do you live there?
I live there.
Do you live there?
Mr. Stiltner, he lives on lot twenty-five.
Can you come up and state your name?
Mr. Stiltner, we're, we're recording this, Mr. Stiltner, if you, if you have comment, please come to the front.
He had an option a while ago at the public hearings, um...
I'm the closest, that's right.
I'm Randy Stiltner, I'm the closest neighbor to the event center. I don't have a problem, these guys did nothing but improve the property, we love it there. All my neighbors that I've spoke to have no problem with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, the public hearing's already closed, so...
Apologize, I, I...
You know, I'm a little concerned about the hours on the weekend myself.
Okay.
I would be if it was my house.
Okay.
Um, you know, I, go ahead, I'll listen to you.
Our focus is mostly the wedding industry, okay? Uh, these, these people are not gonna go to midnight with the music blasting, they're gonna have a, their ceremony at four or five o'clock at the latest, uh, cocktail hour, some dancing from six, eight o'clock, nine o'clock, by ten o'clock, the music will be turned down, definitely within the building. Uh, the, the thing is, midnight is for their convenience as far as packing up, getting everybody ready, uh, shuttle services if needed.
And nobody's gonna say anything about that, okay? We're talking about the actual time the doors is open with music and, you know, nobody's gonna come complaining about you breaking down and, and getting your stuff out, but usually that takes a...
It's not gonna be like a full-time event, you gotta have one, one or two events a week there, you know, it's not like we're talking a seven-day operation.
But you know, I'm in the, I'm in the, uh, restaurant business as well, and it takes about two hours to close down once you, once you get shut down, so if you shutting down at midnight, it's two o'clock before you get out of there.
Before I, I get out of there, absolutely.
Um, so we realize some of that, that's why I'm saying the hours of twelve, to me, in, in this setting's a little late, you know? Uh, I still think you can do your business and it, it can be successful, and ma'am, we've already had the public here, and I'm sorry, but you can, you can give that to these guys here and, uh...
Thank you.
But that's just my personal opinion, okay? I mean, and then we got other board members here that they don't have to agree with my opinion, but, um...
It's my intentions to be, uh, respectful of all my neighbors.
Right.
You know, uh, I, I wouldn't want that, it, it might outside my location either.
Right.
Um...
And that's the way I try to vote on things, I would want it somewhat in my neighborhood or close to my neighborhood, so...
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies, gentlemen.
For ten o'clock be a game breaker, I mean...
Would ten o'clock be a game breaker to have the music turned, uh, off and, and start shutting it down, or, that was a question from Commissioner Elliott, would ten o'clock on a Friday and Saturday night be late enough or, or any night, really?
That's our intentions.
Oh, I thought I heard midnight.
It actually says midnight.
It says midnight in the conditions, so I think we're talking about two different things, and as a point of clarity, I think Commissioner Elliott wants to know whether you would cease activities at ten o'clock, and then you have a, a time after that where you can clean up and, and shut down. Is that agreeable to you? This, this is a conditional zoning request, so we can negotiate the conditions, but both sides have to agree to the condition. So eight, eight to ten PM was your, your, uh, Sunday through Thursday hours.
Right.
Um...
And it's giving you to ten o'clock, okay? I mean, I don't think your neighbors, unless you're raising cane and a lot of noise, I don't think they're gonna be calling the law on you anyhow, okay? Like I said, if they can't hear anything over there...
And it's my job as a supervisor, come ten o'clock, to make sure it's not going outside my building, you know, and I'm gonna be on-site, you know? I don't want anybody calling, oh, only. Uh, I, I think, uh, the hours, uh, for events, uh, which I didn't bring up, also special events like high school proms from private and public schools, New Year's Eve parties, Christmas parties generally, generally run to midnight. There are some special situations, uh, that would be necessary to be, uh, to midnight, uh, certainly not every wedding, uh, most of the weddings are, are gonna be out of there, uh, long... Uh, certainly not every wedding, uh, most of the weddings are, are gonna be out of there, uh, long before midnight. But, uh, it, it's be our job as supervisors to make sure that everything was contained and ran according to these conditions.
I personally, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I, I never thought if I'd live to be, that ten o'clock was my bedtime. And I think, you know, some, ten o'clock's a little bit unreasonable for some events. Uh, especially on Sa- Saturday night.
Well, like I say, I agree with you, but it's according to where that event's at. This one here is in the middle of a residential area.
But I think Morrison had events that lasted longer than ten o'clock. And I don't think I've ever heard a complaint from anybody down there.
We simply wanna do what Larry had been doing, pretty much. We're concentrating on weddings, which is not a throw-down type of event by any stretch of the imagination. It's a, it's a celebration with family, friends, create memories, that have a, you know, have a nice time, good food, good music. Uh, then, you know, pack up and go home and remember your day forever.
Well, if you have, if you have a dinner, for example, and you got, you have a little dance afterward, you, you get dinner good.
I understand, I understand.
Sit there, talk to nine, nine-thirty, and then you don't have your time for, you know, getting up, socializing a little bit, I think that's a little bit...
I'll go with the board's pleasure, but go ahead.
Sometimes you'll have a wedding, and then a sit-down dinner, you know, and then celebration and dancing. And that, that would be difficult to sit in between eight and ten o'clock.
Certainly would, yeah.
Most of our ceremonies are three or four, five o'clock. Cocktail hours after, dinner's another hour, they're started by seven, between seven and ten o'clock.
Initially, Mr. Morrison's hours were capped at ten, but then with the modification in two thousand and six, they were expanded verbatim to what Mr. Rhodes has in his application.
Okay.
Uh, Chuck, if I understand right, the, the law enforcement don't even get involved until after eleven o'clock, is that just in the cities?
I do not, no, sir.
Okay, it used to be eleven o'clock, you know, you had to start, you know, if it were enforced, but that may just be in the cities, but... You're the law man, I'm listening to you.
Hey, here's the law man, but he works in the city, and it's been a seven, you're not gonna...
They party it all night, so I don't know, you know?
I mean, I, I'm okay, this gentleman here's gonna have to hopefully be respectful of his neighbors.
Yeah, I agree.
Uh, you know, so it all really boils down to that, whether you're respectful to your neighbors or not. And again, I, I get it, I'm getting to the age now at twelve o'clock, I don't want a lot of...
Yeah.
Music across the street from my house when I'm trying to...
With all respect, I, I'm a Christian man. I'm gonna try to do the right thing in all cases. And part of it's to be a humble servant and a good neighbor, to love and cherish your neighbors. Uh, all I can do is speak for myself.
And you understand, I wouldn't even have those concerns if this thing was out in the middle of sixty-four over here somewhere where the trucks was louder than the music.
I do understand, but some of the, some of the, uh, places that my real estate agent brought to the point are surrounded by residential...
Right.
Places as well, just in due respect, all respect.
Yeah, I don't know what kinda time limits we got on those conditional uses either, but, um...
They're, they're run forever.
I, I'm sure it's...
Yeah, with the land.
Within my...
No, I'm talking about their, uh, time, you know, we, we... We said conditional uses on those as well, and I don't remember what they were, but anyhow, thank you, I, I...
Thank you very much.
I just told you my concerns and, all right? So, uh, do we have a motion, uh, do we need staff recommendations?
I'd be happy, I'll be brief, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, as alluded to earlier, this, this was initially started in two thousand and three by special use, and in two thousand and six and two thousand and seven, it was expanded both in footprint and hours of operation. Um, in two thousand and eleven, we adopted conditional zoning, because anytime you have a piece of, of regulation, you cannot foresee every single scenario that you face. Um, in my professional opinion, the conditional zoning is in place for, for the rare exception like this. You have a facility that's been in front of our Board of Adjustment three separate times, and one of the, one of the conditions that they have to prove is that the use is in compliance with the general plans for the physical development of the county as embodied these, in these regulations. The combination of, of Mr. Rhodes' appraiser, um, speaking to the highest and best use of the property, which is a term we frequently use in planning, trying to figure out what's the best use for that, and the fact that this, this has been vetted three times by our Board of Adjustment, uh, is, is a fairly compelling reason to support Mr. Rhodes's request. Um, we also have our, our county land development plan, where policy statements one-one, one-two, one-four, one-five, one-seven, and one-eight support the request. Um, the planning board on March seventh did approve this four to zero, and, and staff would ask the county commissioners to approve it and adopt a statement of consistency. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Questions, I, I'm ready for a motion. A motion, uh, to approve the rezoning request and adopt the resolution statement of consistency.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, cast your vote.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by vote six, zero.
So your rezoning passed, so you're good to go. Be mindful of your neighbors, and thank you very much, I wish you much, much success, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You fix it, no more barbecue. That's a good point, Mr. Commissioner.
Let's see. All right, we're moving on to, uh, seven E. Uh, wait a minute, let me back up.
Seven D?
Seven D. I marked it done, it's not done yet. Uh, rezoning request by Benny Newsom in Cotton Grove Township containing five point two-six-five acres plus or minus from RA two to CZ RC, Mr. Crook?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, we have, we do have a request by Benny Newsom to rezone property located in Cotton Grove Township, tax map twenty-six, portion of lot thirty-eight, containing five point two-six acres, more or less. Said property's located on the north side of Wofford Circle, east of the Wofford Road intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RA two Rural Agricultural District to that of CZ HC, uh, conditional zoning highway commercial district. When Debbie sent me the, um, the agenda, I overlooked that, that's my fault, it's supposed to be conditional zoning hi- highway commercial. It was listed in the, uh, legal ad like that, and the application reflects highway commercial, so... Um, Mr. Benny Newsom is the, is the applicant with this. Basically, this is Highway eight, right here, Gray Road, Wofford Circle, uh, excuse me, Wofford Road and Wofford Circle. Mr. Newsom's property is highlighted in yellow, um, so that, that property actually extends down here to Wofford Circle. What he's requesting is the cross-tatch area to the north of this. He's requesting a, uh, conditional zoning highway commercial district in order to, um, build some mini storage or compartmentalized storage buildings. The, um, as you can see, the limit of, of disturbance is outlined with this line right here. Although the area to be rezoned will actually be down to here. One of the conditions of this property, and I think this is included in your packet, um, it, it lists the use of compartmentalized storage and some outs- outdoor storage. All of the trees that are outside the area of disturbance will remain, uh, for screening. Lighting restrictions, he's gonna get NC, he's actually already got an NC DOT driveway permit, and the property be fenced for security, and he's gonna get an erosion control permit. Um, this site where, let me get back to this at... He's actually gonna access the site off of Fieser Road. NC DOT, in an effort to get rid of at-grade crossings, has purchased this property right here. So at some point in the future, it potentially is a safety improvement, we're not sure when it'll take place, but Fieser Road will actually come down here, connect to Wofford Circle, then go out to this intersection right here. Um, that's my introduction to the, uh, of the application, and, Mr. Chairman, once you open the public hearing, would invite Mr. Newsom up to...
Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing, uh, Mr. Newsom, will you step forward and explain the request, please? We got the general idea already, so...
Okay, my name's Benny Newsom, four-five-eight-five Parks Road, and I'm trying to get, um, CZ HC zoning for the proposed storage units and outside storage. I think we need it in the area, cause the lots keep getting smaller and people's got stuff. I mean, they gotta store it somewhere.
Any questions for Mr. Newsom? Nope. If you wanna take the front row, uh, we'll see if we got anybody in opposition or in favor. Anybody in favor or opposition of this rezoning? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Mr. Crook, if you will.
Thank you, Commissioner Yates. Um, over the last twenty-five years, this intersection of NC Highway eight has seen a lot of commercial development. We've got a, a Dollar General that was developed here, there's some commercial zoning here. This property was rezoned for a race shop initially, then changed to a, a auto, auto parts store, uh, or, excuse me, a garage. We have a restaurant that's been added down here, there's a heating and air business here. This property was rezoned back in the nineties by Mr. William Aditron for a, uh, a restaurant that never, uh, developed. So there, this is a commercial service center, because it, it does serve the needs of the local community with, with small, uh, commercial needs, uh... Mr. Newsom has submitted conditions that would minimize any potential impacts that the use may have to the surrounding properties. Um, the land development plan policies one-one, one-two, one-three, one-five, one-seven, one-eight, five-four, five-five, and five-six, all support the applicant's request. And, um, we would contend that there are change or changing conditions here with the type of development that's taking place around the intersection that's, uh, been alluded to, plus the increase in residential development all along the lake. These facilities are really closely associated with residential development, as Mr. Newsom, uh, disclosed, because people just don't have enough storage and they got a lot of stuff. So we'd recommend approval of the request and ask you to, uh, adopt a statement of consistency, and this was approved by the planning board five-two-zero on their March seventh meeting.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Vice Chair, I'm sorry.
Mr. Vice Chair, I just got one question from Mr. Crook.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Crook, I see it looks like a, a creek or something is running through the middle of that.
That is accurate, yes, sir.
So what?
There, there's a creek right here that runs along the property. As you can see, the area of the disturbance is gonna be back here. Um, Mr. Newsom had a very nice site plan done by a B and L survey, and we come in and we discuss that. There's not gonna be any disturbance to any of this area back here, so it'll remain in the natural condition. Now, Mr. Newsom understands that if he disturbs over a contiguous acre, he's gotta get an erosion control plan through the state of North Carolina. So it, it, it depends on how he phases his development. If he goes over forty thousand square feet, he's gotta submit through DEQ to have that erosion and sedimentation control plan.
Mr. Newsom, if, if may I, if I may, Mr. Vice Chair, how do you plan on doing, uh, drains or runoff or...
Uh, I'm not going past the limits of the fence. I'm not getting in the creek. It's not really a creek, it's a drainage area. I've talked to three or four different people.
I, I was just going by the map, and it looked...
Right, for three, for about three grand, they'll, they'll delineate this creek and find out it's not a creek. But I don't, I, I'm not going back there anyway.
I got you.
So it's a drainage from, um, basically a storm pipe that comes under the railroad track that you can see on that map... That leads to that. It's not a blue water, but to get blue water creeks changed, you got a lot of paperwork.
Okay.
And it's just not worth it to me.
Okay.
I'm not gonna change it.
How much are you disturbing here?
Once it's, um...
When you put the buildings on it and gravel the lot?
I would say it's probably about two and a half acres.
So you're gonna get erosion control permit to do it?
Yes, if, if, I'm gonna stage it, so I may not, I may not go that far yet. Depends on what's, uh, what people want.
Right.
If I get more people saying, I need to store my boat, then I may stop at halfway and we store boats.
You'll fill up quick, man.
All right, so, any other questions? I'm good, sir.
Do I have a, a motion to approve or deny?
Mr. Vice Chairman, I make a motion that we approve, based off the statement of consistency.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please cast your vote.
Debbie looked at me, I said...
And that motion carries by vote six, zero.
All right, thank you. Your vote passed, your rezoning passed, I'm gonna tell you the same as the last gentleman, good luck, okay? Yep. Seven E?
Mr. Vice Chair, uh, last but not least, we have a request by Alfred C. Tyner Senior to rezone property in Hilling Springs Township, tax map nine E, block A, lot forty-five, containing point eight-six acre, more or less. Said property's located on the south side of Pearl Drive, approximately twenty-five hundredths of a mile east to the southernmost shoreline drive intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RS, low in, low intensity residential district, to that of RA two Rural Agricultural District. Um, Ms. Frankie Bird is in the audience, she's the agent for Mr. Tyner. Mr. Tyner is an absentee property owner who lives in Florida, and is elderly. I think Ms. Bird has had this on the market for a num- uh, I'll let her allude to how long it's been, been here. Um, and it's currently zoned RS, which is restricted to modular homes or stick-built houses. If any of you have been down Pearl Drive at all, you, you know that there's a lot of legal non-conforming, single-wide manufactured homes down there. And, um, the property, this is an old subdivision that was done back in the fifties, Ray Mac Forest, and the roads were never completely put in, they were cleared and graded, but there was never a surface put on them. So they're more like driveways as opposed to state-maintained roads. So if you have no questions for me, we can open the public hearing and have Ms. Bird come up and elaborate a little more.
I don't have any questions, anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing, uh, Ms. Bird, if you would, come to the front. Do you have much to add to what Mr. Crook had to say? No? I think he explained it pretty well.
He did, and when we went planning, he, uh, planning board, he had been down there, so had a couple of the others.
Okay.
They didn't wanna go back down there, because of the road, I think.
Any question?
And I can't sell the RS is stick-built homes. You're not gonna find anybody to put that kinda money in a home on that lot.
Right. Okay, I think I got you. Any questions for Ms. Bird?
I got one question.
Okay.
Frankie, where do you get your youth pills from? You had an age, I hadn't seen you in a while, I hadn't seen you in a long time, you had an age today.
Oh, yes, I have, just gotten mainer.
I need some of them if you, if you find out.
Okay. So no, 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 any other questions?
No, sir.
Just for more or less you, we're, we're going backwards, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, we're going backwards, all right. Thank you, Ms. Bird, you may wanna have a seat there, uh, on the front row, in case anybody else has any questions, uh, in the future, I don't think so. Anybody in favor or in opposition of this, uh, rezoning? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
The staff's gonna support the request, there are several policy statements, uh, that support this, six-one, six-five, six-ten, seven-one, and seven-four. It's contiguous to existing RA two, and, um, staff would recommend approval. It was approved by the Davison County Planning Board on February twenty-first, five to zero. We'd ask you to do the same and adopt a statement of consistency.
Okay, y'all's heard staff's recommendation, do, any questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Vice Chair, I make a motion that we approve, uh, the recommendation, uh, upon the statement of consistency.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Cast your vote, please.
Debbie, I don't know what I hear.
You got it. All of the votes are in?
Yeah, the objection's here.
I was trying to get a second, I was trying to get a second.
Careful, you buy a vote in six, zero, you got your vote and your, and your vote in it, or your...
Your rezoning passed, Frankie, I'm gonna call you Frankie this time, and, uh, good luck in selling, uh, your lot, okay? Have a great afternoon.
Thank you. Good job.
Moving on to the, uh, consent agenda. Uh, anybody wanna remove or add anything to the con... Anybody want to remove or add anything to the consent agenda?
Seeing no changes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Cast your vote. Six-zero, awesome. Okay, agenda nine-A. Commissioner Elliott.
So, we have a proclamation that for the month of April twenty-twenty-three will be Sexual Abuse Awareness Month. Whereas, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, a time to draw attention to the prevalence of sexual assault and educate individuals and communities about how to prevent it. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community as seen by the number of Davidson County survivors seeking assistance from their assaults. And whereas this crime occurs far too frequently, goes unreported far too often, and leaves long-lasting physical and emotional scars. And whereas sexual harassment, abuse, and assault are widespread problems in the United States alone, nearly one in five women and one in sixty-seven men have been raped at some time in their lives. And one in four girls and one in twenty boys is sexually abused by the age of seventeen. And whereas sexual harassment, assault, and abuse can happen anywhere, including in online spaces, now more than ever, screens and technology connects us with others. But for too long, harassment, cyberbullying, and sexual abuse have been seen as an unavoidable behavior that's online. And whereas each of us has the power to change that, together, we can make a difference to build inclusive, safe, and respectful communities that thrive online and offline. And whereas twenty-twenty-three marks the twenty-second anniversary of SAM. And the theme of this year's campaign is drawing connections. Prevention demands teamwork, and we can build online, we can build consent intervening when we see harmful behaviors and promoting online communities that value inclusion, safety, and respect. And whereas Davidson County strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners and every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what sexual violence is and how to prevent it, and how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Now therefore be it resolved, the Davidson County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims April twenty-twenty-three as Sexual Assault Awareness Month throughout the county and urges all people of the county to learn about sexual assault and commit themselves to the community goal of ensuring that everyone in Davidson County can live their life free of sexual violence. Adopted this twenty-seventh day of March twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve that proclamation?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Everybody cast their vote, please.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by vote of six-zero.
Awesome, okay. Nine-B.
Mr. Vice Chair, Tim Tilly is here to accept that proclamation.
Who is?
Tim Tilly from.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't know that. They didn't tell me that. Would you like to say anything, Tim?
Well, just to let you know. In our annual report of twenty-twenty-two, we served, our crisis units served over sixteen hundred unduplicated clients, many of them victims of violence, including sexual assault. And we handled over thirteen hundred crisis calls. So, to understand this is a problem in our county, to acknowledge this and for all of us pulled together to make sure that our children, our families are safe. And we really appreciate this recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
I didn't see Tim's name at the bottom, sorry about that, Deb. Uh, nine-B.
So, we have an additional proclamation for the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And I'll try to get through this as quick as Chris. Pardon me, I've got some allergies today. Whereas nine-one-one is nationally recognized as the number to call in an emergency to receive immediate help from police, fire, emergency medical services, or other appropriate emergency response entities. And whereas nine-one-one was designated by Congress as the national emergency call number under the Wireless Communications and Public Safety Act of nineteen-ninety-nine, Public Law one-zero-six dash eighty-one. And whereas the Enhanced nine-one-one Act of two thousand and four, Public Law one-zero-eight dash four-nine-four, established Enhanced nine-one-one as a high national priority as part of our nation's homeland security and public safety. And whereas people of all ages use nine-one-one, and it is critical to educate the public of all ages on the proper use of nine-one-one. And whereas a growing segment of the population, including the deaf, hard-of-hearing, deaf-blind, and individuals with speech disabilities increasingly communicate with non-traditional text, video, and instant messaging communication services, and anticipate that these services will be able to connect directly to nine-one-one. And whereas thousands of nine-one-one calls are made every year by children properly trained on the use of nine-one-one, resulting in lives saved, which underscores the critical importance of training children early in life about nine-one-one. And whereas there is widespread misuse of the nine-one-one system, including prank and non-emergency calls, which can result in costly and inefficient use of nine-one-one and emergency resources. Now therefore, the Davidson County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, through April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week, and call upon all government officials, parents, teachers, school administrators, caregivers, businesses, leaders, nonprofit organizations, and the people of Davidson County to observe this month of training events and activities to educate the public on nine-one-one and its services. Adopted this the twenty-seventh day of March twenty-twenty-three. And that is my motion to adopt.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and we have a second. Cast your vote, please. Here, this one down front.
That was Commissioner Shaw on the second one.
Let you have done the last one. Uh, go ahead, Rob, you got something to say?
Just real briefly, Commissioners. Every year during the second week of April, telecommunications all across the country are honored. This week-long event is a time we take to celebrate and thank those who dedicate their lives to serving the public as the first responder. It's a week that we set aside so that everyone can be made aware of the hard work these folks do and their dedication. We want to thank our Board of County Commissioners for repeatedly recognizing our nine-one-one staff. Thank you.
Amen.
Thank you, Rob. May I have your care of that proclamation?
Motion carried by vote of six-zero.
I didn't thank anybody to vote against that.
We all got ready to get in here. So, I'd choose.
Yes, sir.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
I know you just.
Thank you, Rob.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
Yes, sir.
Good job, sir.
Thank you, buddy.
Nine-C, this is Ms. Watford here, Commissioner Watford.
Thank you for letting me do this proclamation. Now, this is a proclamation for National Library Week and National Library Workers' Day. Whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, or socio-economic status. And whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. And whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships. And whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. And whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. And whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week and National Library Workers' Day. Now therefore be it resolved that the Davidson County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim National Library Week, April the twenty-third through the twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-three, and National Library Workers' Day on April the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. During this week, all residents are encouraged to visit their library and to explore the wealth of resources available. Adopted this the twenty-seventh day of March twenty-twenty-three, and that is my motion.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote. And while we're waiting on that vote, to come back if Ms. Killer Brew would like to say something.
Thank you, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to be here tonight, and thank you for, Commissioner Watford, for reading that so ably. Our Board of Trustees Chair Peggy Wessel was here, but she had to scoot out. So, sorry about that. She sends her regards. The theme for this year's week is "There's More to the Story." And so, the idea behind that is that libraries are more than just books. We have a lot of programming. I know Commissioner Elliott and I were talking about that a couple of weeks ago. Just a quick look through our next newsletter that's coming out this week. We have programs that relate to, we have Lego Family Night. We have a dog that's visiting, and kids like to read to the dog. Of course, there's story times and craft programs. We are, we like to encourage lifelong learning. So, the more people read, the more they learn. We want to get them inside of our buildings so that they have this habit of learning. And that's what our staff does, that's what they do their level best to do every day. And we really appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Motion carries by vote of six-zero.
I love it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, nine-D.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Ms. Coontz, would you come up?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a proclamation for Public Health Month, April twenty-twenty-three. Whereas the Davidson County Health Department has served the community for more than one hundred years and provided immeasurable contributions to enhancing the quality of life for our residents. And whereas, public health programs have evolved over the past century from a focus on sanitation and controlling the spread of infectious diseases to now also preventing the onset of chronic diseases. And whereas, the significant increase in life expectancy is widely credited to improvements in public health programs. And whereas, public health promotes improved lifestyle by providing services and supporting policies to help young people stay well and develop and to help the adults. Now therefore be it resolved that the Davidson County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of April twenty-twenty-three as Public Health Month and encourage all citizens of Davidson County to take steps to protect and promote the health and well-being of their families by making healthy personal lifestyle choices and seeking regular preventative health care. Adopted this the twenty-seventh day of March twenty-twenty-three. And Mr. Vice Chair, I read that as my form of a motion.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'd like to second that with a comment that I also recognize, Lillian. She was appointed to a spectacular committee by our governor, Roy Cooper. It's an honor that we've got a talent like that under our household. And congratulations for that. That's a huge honor.
Absolutely.
So, we have a motion and a second. Will you cast your vote, please?
Did mine come in?
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by vote of six-zero.
Would you like to say something, Lillian?
Yes, sir, thank you, Vice Chairman Yates, my apologies. I'm joined tonight by Tammy Troublefield. She is our Board of Health Chair. Tammy comes with me tonight to accept this. As I say every year, and I want to remind you again, your health is your wealth. So, please take care of that, and thank y'all so much. And Tammy, if you have anything.
Tammy was with City, wasn't she? I mean, the uptown, was it uptown you were? Reece Yell, Chamber of Commerce, that's right, okay. I do, thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner Elliott.
Getting ready for April, I bought a Planet Fitness membership.
It's the reflection. It's shame.
Congratulations.
Got to have it in the speed mode from the floor so I can.
Pretty bad. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I love you too.
Congratulations.
Moving on to nine-E. Chair, you gonna lead this off?
Evening. I'm just here to talk to you about the resolution for the second wave of the settlement, opioid settlement funds. As you know, Walmart, Walgreens, CVS, and Teva and Argen have reached settlement amounts, or reached a settlement agreement. There's over six hundred million dollars coming to North Carolina, and Davidson County will receive about ten million dollars of that, which puts our total at about twenty-two-point-five million dollars for the first wave and the second wave. That money will be distributed similarly to the first wave between sometime later on this year and two thousand and thirty-five. It's not quite as, we don't have the timeline quite narrowed down as much as we do for the first wave of settlements. But hopefully sometime later on this summer, we'll see the first settlement money coming in. The way that they'll be distributed this time, they're all, all five defendants will be sending their money separately and in different amounts at different times. So, it's not anything as structured, again, as that first settlement amount. And we're hoping Walmart, for example, is planning to do all their money upfront in the first year. Not all the defendants are doing that. So, again, hopefully we'll see that first payment in two thousand and twenty-three. There is a SAF, it's the Supplemental Additional Funds Agreement that we have from the National Opioid Settlement Committee. They have asked us, or asked you all to sign that approving this second wave of settlements. It's very similar, almost identical to the original memorandum of agreement. It's very similar, almost identical to the original memorandum of agreement that was signed in August of two thousand and twenty-one. So the same terms, same way that the money is being distributed. You have to set up a special fund. You can use, uh, the same fund that we've used for the first wave of settlement money, or we can set up another one. And there's still the reporting requirements and the same conditions on that money as in the first wave. And you have a copy of the resolution, and you should have the SAF in front of you as well.
Commissioner Shell, you kind of serve on that. You got anything to say about this?
No, it's just a process, I'm sure to tell you. Uh, you know, trying to figure out, and then you run into things that, to be honest with you, that you think that you could utilize the money for, like fentanyl, in my opinion, is a very dangerous opio- uh, uh, additive. And we wanted to try to, uh, you know, one of the things that I wanted to do was look at the possibility of using that funds for an opioid task force within a law enforcement committee. And, and Attorney General says we can't do that. Now, why? I have no idea. I have no idea. I mean, it just, uh, to me, uh, the only thing I don't like is the Attorney General's Office steering the ship. I don't like that.
The Opioid Settlement Funds Committee that we have here in Davidson County has been meeting monthly for the past several months and working very diligently, as you're aware, Commissioner Shell, you're on that committee, um, to try to figure out how to distribute the funds and use the funds in the most effective and beneficial way possible for the county.
Well, according to outlines that are presented to us from the AG's office.
That is correct. It was in the original MAU.
Remember, too, because, you know, there's, as, people have different visions and different thoughts about how to utilize that money. But unfortunately, we're, it's like strings are being put on us as to how we can use it. Like, we don't have enough sense to know what's best for our community. And I resent that. I don't like that.
I think the restrictions, if I might, um, um, Mr. Vice Chairman, come not from the memorandum of agreement that we executed with the other counties and with the state, but they actually come from the federal court, which oversaw the opioid settlement. And so it's not just our state or our county, but the options that are set out are, are provided on a national level.
So it was a federal court judge's decision on how this...
It was part of the settlement agreement that was reached, both with the first wave and now subsequently with the second wave of settlements, yes.
So I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Our business is to approve this, the funding?
Yes, and, and I, I hear, Commissioner Shell, and I know that you have been working with the committee on finding a path forward with these monies. But the, the question tonight is not how do we utilize those monies, but simply do we accept the second
Ten-four.
wave that is coming in.
It's for a motion to approve or deny the resolution is what it's for.
Yeah.
He serves on that committee, so...
This, this is...
And I think we'd be foolish not to approve it. It's just, I don't, I don't, I couldn't go and do that without expressing my dissatisfaction with the process. Because we're the ones that filed a lawsuit. Attorney General's Office didn't do that.
So this ain't really coming out the Attorney General's Office, and this is a federal...
It, it is, but again, the question for...
I know what the question is tonight. I don't need clarification on that. But what you're saying is the federal, these stipulations that he is saying, because I talked to a legislator today. He said it was, the funds were sent here for us to spend the way we see fit, but that's why I want to make sure the state, uh, attorney hadn't involved himself in anything.
They have. They have been acting, uh, as the interpreter of...
The referees.
Of, of what the, the language, whether it's under what parcel of designation it falls. There are certain elements that we can do without any further oversight. There are certain actions that we would require, um, further permission in order to use them. And so what they're telling us right now, I appreciate the concern it causes, but that's only advisory. And that's only advisory from the AG's office, and they're not the only ones who make the final call.
That's what I wanted to hear, okay?
Wait a minute. I've been told that that was law, uh, and you, in fact, you showed me a sheet of paper that outlined what they say we can spend the money on. I didn't see a thing on there about advisory.
No, under, yeah, under their option...
I've been told from day one that what they said we can spend the money on is, is, that's it, period.
Those options that are listed in there, that, that's your choices, and so there is no law enforcement part under option A. Now, what I hadn't checked is option B, but I have not flipped that page over to see if there's anything there. I don't recall any piece of this being for law enforcement.
And see, the reason I'm sitting, I think this needs to be a part of the record when we accept this resolution. You know, I don't just do it lightheartedly, because I think it needs to be part of the record of the fact that we've got citizens dying every day from fentanyl. And we can't even, we can't establish a task force within a law enforcement to handle fentanyl. That's preventive. Not, not going after the fact, after a person's already dead or after a person's already addicted. That's preventive measures, and now he's telling, especially when he goes to the legislature asking, asking for additional funds to fund a ta- uh, fentanyl task force. But we can't do that?
Well, I think that's something we'll at least ask our legislators to see, uh, and say, maybe we can't, but if, if they say we can't, then we can pursue that with our legislators, you know? For sure to see if they can make a difference. I don't know.
You know, I'm just sick and tired of people making excuses.
And our representatives.
For, uh, control measures that should not be there.
I mean, me and Cherry definitely deal with it on a regular basis with DSS. I mean, it's...
And I'm not saying anything, yes, you, Cherry. It's just that I couldn't support the resolution without expressing my views that I don't like the way it's been presented to us.
What we have to do, what we could do...
My motion would be to accept it.
All right. Motion, second. Cast your vote, please. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
And we definitely need to get with our legislators if, um...
Hey, no. Well, I've been told that's, that's pretty much the law. That's what you gotta do. You can't do anything different. Now I'm being told is, is, what'd you say the word was?
I think, and I'd be glad to talk with you and the board and...
Now, this is for the board.
Yes, sir.
What did you say the word was that they used? And, uh, and I said it was control, and you said it was, it's purely, what was the word? Anybody remember what the word was?
I think the term that was advisory.
Advisory.
And, and I, and, but there are, there are several different options by which the funds can be spent. And, uh, Casey alluded to that a moment ago when he talked about option A, and those are, you, you don't need any further consent or direction on that. There is a second element, though, under option B, which it allows the county or the municipality to whom the funds have been appropriated to develop their own plan, and then to take it to this board that consists of, of a variety of different legislators and, and, um, end users for this, to determine if the monies are consistent with the direction under the federal settlement. And so there is some, there is some flexibility in that. I think what we may have heard so far was that the, the advisory opinion that we got was that it was not likely to be successful.
And B, and option B.
I don't know that we've heard about option B.
That's something I need to research, but, um, option A is us doing it without submitting...
Yeah, option A is black and white, pretty much, it sounds like.
Right. It's without submitting a strategic plan to Raleigh and all those kinds of things. I'm not sure about B. Um, in my conversations with the gentleman that are the AG's office that runs the program, he probably, I'm assuming he would have told me if option B, he, you know, law enforcement piece didn't get, Commissioner Shell just saw the list under option A. There's no law enforcement piece to it, so you, B possibly, but that is a conversation I need to have with him, and I need to look under option B. It's very, option B's got a lot, a litany of things that you've got to cross and hurdles you've got to do, but you submit that to Raleigh and you get approval.
So is this a committee, you said, or what is the name?
And I'm sorry, I did not. It's been a while since I've looked at this.
Okay, I get you.
And, and I'd be glad to prepare a memo and submit it to you with regard to that, but yes.
If you would, that'd be good, because like I say, Ms. Karen, too, we, we talked today, and there, there really needs to be some county input on some of this stuff. I know there is some, but go ahead. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to...
Now, forgive me. I, um, it provides flexibility that doesn't exist within option A. Uh, and I don't know, Commissioner Shell, if it would go so far as to, uh, provide for particular concern that you have, but I'll be glad to look at it. It's, I, you know, it's been a couple of years now since we, um, adopted the first wave of settlement. And I, I have not looked back at that since that time.
But it's, but more importantly, it's not just my concerns, it's the concerns of the citizens out here watching their, their loved ones die on the side of the road because of fentanyl.
Yes.
And, you know, uh, I, I, I don't see any problem with preventing, trying to do what we can to prevent that and being told, well, no, we're, we're not going to allow that. Who put them in charge anyway? The federal government?
Okay, we're gonna move on here. Thank you.
And that motion carries by vote of six zero.
We're gonna move on. Sorry, I'm trying to reply to meeting I got. Um, okay, nine F.
We have a longstanding...
You got a time.
That's why I say we have a longstanding rule that a certain person is to wear a tie for these items, so I won't interrupt this item. I'll let him have it.
Good evening, Commissioners. I appreciate you allowing me to come up and talk about this this evening, but first of all, I want to thank you for allowing Monica Byerly to write this grant to start with. This was her first attempt at a grant, and she was able to receive funding. We received, we received the letter from the governor that, that we qualified and got this grant for, uh, five hundred thousand dollars, with a match of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So it's six hundred and thirty thousand dollars for West Center Street Campus. And, um, we also, again, I want to thank Tisha back here, partnered with Senior Services. They put, uh, they're putting up fifty thousand of the hundred and thirty thousand, so, um, it, it was a good partnership all the way around on this grant. And like I said, I mean, it was a good teaching effort for Monica to learn how to do this, and I'm really, I'm really proud of her taking this on. She conducted the public meetings and everything. I stood in the background, let her do it, and she did it. She did a wonderful job. And I just wanted to commend her and thank y'all for allowing her to do that. But, um, what you have is, as I said, we have received a letter from the governor and a couple more letters from different offices in, from Raleigh, letting us know that we received this grant. We should be getting the contract soon to the manager's office to, and, uh, we can't start anything until we sign the contract and send it back. But I just wanted to bring this to you and make you aware of that she did, she was able to receive this funding. And we have, we have got this grant as well to be able to, uh, do some upgrades to West Center Street Campus and that. If you want, I'll give you a list. Well, I'm gonna give you a list anyway.
They're inside the item there.
Okay. Yep, so, uh, there's quite a bit of stuff we're gonna be doing at West Center Street Campus, and it's gonna really make that place, uh, a place for people to show up to as well.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of privilege, and I won't belabor our time, but we all know that you're the grant writing whisperer, and you've helped out a lot of municipalities around, but it's a testament to your leadership, the fact that you're training your staff to do that also. And, uh, you work well with other departments. I'd also like to thank Tisha. Y'all work very well over there, and we appreciate both of y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. No other questions?
No, sir.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Cast your vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I just asked for a point of privilege. I just want to say thank you to many of you who sent kind words to me, wrote a card, visited, visited me and my mother at my, at the funeral home.
Bless her.
Uh, you really helped, helped me through difficult time, and I'm most appreciative to be a part of this family.
Bless her. Wrote you out of your home place yesterday.
That motion carries by vote of six zero.
Okay. Nine G.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, the item you have here before you is a CDBG grant. Back last May, we conducted a public hearing for this grant for Project Renew. I just put it on here because I wanted you all to see this. This is a little bit larger match than normally you would have saw. But remember, when we did this item, we traded out the incentives, we lowered the incentive amount due to the fact we knew this was going to be a higher local match on this CDBG grant. It's for water sewer extension and natural gas. Um, so it's going to require a little bit more of a match, but again, the incentive percentage that you see in the item there is lower. Uh, I think almost mathematically equal to the amount of match you're putting in. So you're leveling out to zero. You're just trading one for the other. Um, Project Renew, if you remember, was thirty-eight jobs and twelve and a half million investment, but again, this came up last May. We've received notification of the grant. I just want you all to be aware of this, uh, because of the match being a little bit higher than we normally see.
We have a motion?
My vote approved.
Okay, any questions?
None.
A motion, motion to approve. Uh, Commissioner Watford, do we have a second?
Second.
Cast your votes, please.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by vote of six zero.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Dead gum, I'm gonna get one mission.